I never get tired of saying that. All right. Commissioners Zuber, who's here?
We have Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Bennett is not here. Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Here.
Commissioner Graham Hudak.
Good evening.
Chairman Green.
Here.
Commissioner Okon.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins is not here and Commissioner Zuber is here.
All right. And we have our planning staff, Jeff Goulet, and a new member of the planning staff, Patrick Sloan. Patrick came to us last week. Do you, would you like to say a little bit about yourself or no?
Sure. My name is Patrick Sloan and I started working for the township in mid-April. I'm actually a township resident. I've been a township resident for almost nine years. And my background is in planning. I've got a master's in urban planning from the University of Michigan and about 15 or 16 years of planning experience, most recently with a private company called McKenna. That's where I came from. I had worked with McKenna for about seven years and working with communities all over southeast Michigan. So I'm excited to be with Canton and it's been great so far.
Awesome, awesome, and welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining. Okay, we had our last meeting May 6th. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from that meeting?
So moved.
Got a motion to approve the minutes from May 6th by Commissioners Zuber and supported by Commissioner Okon. Any further discussion? By voice vote, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Acceptance of the agenda. Tonight we have two public hearings and one site plan review. Do we have anything late from staff to add to that?
No, sir.
All right, anything from the commission? Hearing none, seeing none. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
Make a motion.
Support.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioners Zuber to accept the agenda and support by Commissioner Egenberger. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, let's get right into it. First public hearing tonight, and for the public hearings, we do urge you to get involved as much as you'd like to. Questions, comments, concerns, but if you do, we ask that you go to the dais, go to the podium and state your concern briefly, your name and address, and then fill out a form for us for the record. So if you do that, we can entertain what you have on mind. Tonight's first public hearing is McMahon Helicopter Service's text amendment where we're considering a text amendment to add small aircraft landing fields and accessory structures to special land use language. Jeff, could you give us more detail on that?
Yes, this is a request to amend the zoning code, creating a category called airport-related businesses and establishing some site development standards for that use within our light industrial district. As a kind of some background to this, McMahon Helicopters been here since the mid-1980s. They service out of Meditol Airport. They currently have a facility on Ronda Drive which they've outgrown. They do a lot of transport of parts and things by helicopter, so they need some more storage space and some office space and things and so they've outgrown their facility, which is a good thing. So when they came in to look at a site on Lily Road to build a new building, we looked at the code and it's like, this is not a permitted use in this area, it's not even a special land use. So we went back and did some research. They were originally approved in the light industrial district back before 1990 when we changed, did a comprehensive change to the zoning code. At that time, we had a category called airport, or we had a category called small landing, you know, small landing strips and it was a special land use in light industrial. In 1990, we took that out of, for some reason, out of the light industrial and only put it in the general industrial zone. So we went back and looked at the code and looked at other related uses and we just, you know, they've made the application to, you know, have that use considered in the light industrial zone as a special land use. So we kind of went through and looked at, you know, what reasonable, you know, use restrictions would be, you know, for that use. Obviously, we've got an airport, we have businesses around the airport. They have a through the, essentially a through the fence agreement with the airport that, you know, they basically, you know, shuttle their helicopters to the landing strip and take off and then they, you know, shuttle them back. Obviously helicopters don't have wheels, so they have to basically haul them back and forth, you know, on skids. So what we have before us is basically something to fix the code because it didn't, we didn't want to call it small, you know, aircraft landing strips anymore. You know, that was probably a category that was used for some reason way back when because it was the only category that they really fit into. So we created a new use called airport-related businesses. So we're proposing to establish that as a special land use in the light industrial district, which would require a public hearing so you could look at the scale and scope of the project. And then we also have some associated site development standards, which we often do with special land uses. So this would basically require the business to be located directly adjacent to the airport property and located and have direct frontage on either Ronda Drive or Lily Road. Those are the two roads that have, you know, have buildings backing to the airport. The user shall also have a written agreement which grants access and approval to operate from the airport and shall comply with the setbacks and height restrictions set forth in the airport zoning plan for Meditol Airport. And that's, that airport zoning plan is a zoning plan that's established by the state of Michigan and a provision that no aircraft may be permanently stored outside the hangar, which means they land it, they have to bring it in when they're deploying, you know, helicopter can't sit there for a long period of time, so we don't have a lot of, so we don't have outside storage of their equipment. McMahon is here if you want to ask any questions about their operations, just to give you an idea of what they do, but staff feels that this is a reasonable change to the zoning code and if the board approves this pursuant to the recommendation of the planning commission, they would have to come back through for a special land use application. So even though they're the ones that prompted the change, it's not specifically for them, there could be other types of airport-related businesses that aren't helicopter-related or aircraft-related that may, you know, be pertinent to the airport there, so.
Well, obviously, this is not something that comes up very often. Do you expect that we're going to have more need for these criteria or is this going to be like a once in a blue moon kind of thing?
You know, there aren't that many, you know, locations where they have direct access to the airfield, so, you know, I doubt whether it's going to come up very often, if at all, so.
All right, you said the project sponsor is here?
I think we've got representatives from McMahon. We'll get them up to the podium.
Okay, if you want to come up and add anything or if anybody has any questions, we would appreciate some answers to those. Hearing that, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion to open the public hearing by Commissioners Zuber and support by Commissioner Engel. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we are open at 7:10. Welcome.
Evening.
Anything to add to what Jeff has said? What's going on?
No, just here to ask questions, answer questions if you have any.
You want to introduce yourself?
I'm Bruce Bargat. I'm the representative for McMahon Helicopters and this is Mark Roth from Sidak Group. He's our engineer in charge of the project.
All right. All right, with that, I'm going to go to the audience and ask if anybody wants to get up and say anything, questions, any, anything? Yes, sir.
Chairman Brian Amen, resident of Canton and heavily involved in the, in, somewhere in Canton. 1777 Stonebridge Way, Canton, Stonebridge Way Court, Canton, Michigan, 48188. So I was heavily involved in the development and the zoning of Detroit Metropolitan Airport and now handling the zoning and development of the city of Detroit Airport. So the only suggestion I have for you on this, I think it's a great idea. The only suggestion I have was simply adding the phrase of airport and aircraft-related. So I would add aircraft as a phrase in there because aircraft is changing in forms as we speak and so if you do that, it may prevent just the need for another zoning change down the road if you simply add that phrase now. That's it. Otherwise, I think it's a great idea. It's going to be important to keep Canton competitive in the future as we move ahead with new technologies and new industries. So I totally support the idea. I just think if you add the phrase aircraft, you won't be visiting this again in a year and a half.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
Don't forget to fill out the card, Mr. Amen.
Yes.
Well, I will.
Yes, thank you very much. Anyone else have anything to say? Any? Now's your chance. Nothing but crickets.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to close the public hearing at 7:11. I like the sound of that. By Commissioners Zuber and support by Commissioner Okon. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to go to the commission. We'll start down with Commissioner Atariah.
A question that I have is would, since we're talking about aircrafts, would drones be considered to be aircrafts in any way in the future? That's my.
Yes, they're, you know, commercial drones are regulated by, you know, by the government, so.
Thank you.
Graham Hudak.
Please, I'd add some of the automotive companies have flying.
Is your mic on?
Yes, it is. Get closer.
Yeah.
Some of the OEMs have flying cars on their product plans now, so I'm assuming that would be covered also.
Well, this, anything that's airport-related would be, if you look at the definition, it says anything, hangars, office space, anything that's related to the airport. So, you know, they would basically have to have an agreement to use the airport basically for, you know, liftoff basically and landing.
Definition.
Yeah, so.
Then when you change it, then we need two readings to make it happen then?
It'll go to the board twice, right?
Twice, okay. Thanks.
Who's Zuber?
I'm fine with this.
As am I.
I'm also fine.
Good. All right, what do you say?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendment to section 22.02. B establishing airport-related businesses as a special land use in the L1 Light Industrial District and amending section 6.02 establishing site development standards for airport-related businesses as provided for in the attached ordinance.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioners Zuber and support by Commissioner Egenberger.
Did you want to add the word aircraft anywhere in there? Either under the definition or in the title?
We need to.
Yes, thank you. Airport and aircraft-related businesses.
Well, I think we could probably just include that in the definition under 602B1 where it says including and just include the word aircraft in there along with hangars, warehouse space and office use.
Okay.
So.
I'm good with that.
So the motion is amended?
The motion is amended.
And I support it, the amendment.
Okay, all right, we have once again a motion on the floor. Voice, or no, that voice vote, would you call the roll please on that?
Absolutely. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Atariah?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. Okay. Our second agenda item tonight is Arbor Glen where we're considering a preliminary PDD for property which is located north of Warren and west of Ridge. Patrick, could you give us more detail on that?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant is proposing to locate 36 single-family homes on approximately 36.02 acres at the northwest corner of Warren Road and Ridge Road. The property is zoned R1 single-family residential at a density of one unit per acre. So the proposed density of 36 homes on just over 36 acres is commensurate with the density allowed in that zone. There is one entrance proposed on Ridge Road on the south part of the site, which is located about 400 feet north of Warren Road. And there's also one emergency vehicle entrance proposed on Ridge Road on the north part of the site, which is located about 1,675 feet north of Warren Road. The project sponsor proposes to pave Ridge Road from Warren Road to the southern entrance to the development. So the area north of that proposed southern entrance would remain unpaved. Each planned development district is required to demonstrate a definite benefit to the community. The project sponsor proposes the following items that we consider to be definite benefits. First, the project proposes to maintain 32.6% of the site as open space, which exceeds the 25% minimum. The second benefit is the construction of sidewalks along the west side of Ridge Road from Arbor Glen to Warren Road, including crosswalks across Ridge Road and Warren Road to connect to the existing sidewalk network on the opposite sides of the roads. The third benefit is the preservation of approximately 800 trees that are either protected or landmark trees on the site. And the fourth benefit of the project is minimizing clearing and grading along Ridge Road, which is classified as a natural beauty road by Wayne County. Additionally, the plans note that the landscaping along Ridge Road will consist of native species consistent with the natural beauty road objectives. Before getting to our recommendation, we have a few findings regarding the project. First, for the schedule of regulations and modifications, the minimum lot area will be 17,000 square feet. The minimum lot width will be 100 feet and the proposed setbacks are 35 feet for front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks of 15 feet on one side and 25 feet on the other side, which will allow for a separation distance of 40 feet between buildings on each lot. And also, there are some wetland setback modifications proposed for lots 7, 8, 32, 34, and 35. Our recommendation on the setbacks is that the plans and PD agreement must include a complete schedule of regulations and modifications. For the natural features, Ridge Road north of Warren Road is classified as a natural beauty road and the clearing and grading in the Ridge Road right-of-way is minimized on the plans. For example, only five trees are proposed for removal on the Ridge Road right-of-way south of the development road and the species of those five trees are elm, box elder, and cottonwood. For the landscaping, we recommend that an illustrative landscape plan be submitted at final PDD review for the frontage areas along Warren and Ridge Road and we recommend that the planning on the landscape plan be consistent with the natural character of those frontages, including natural beauty road standards. And also, there are some berms proposed within the right-of-way areas and we recommend that the berms be relocated out of the right-of-way areas and that no berms be included along frontages that would otherwise not be cleared or graded so as to preserve natural vegetation and topography where possible. And then finally, with regard to the access management, there's a secondary emergency access at the north side of the site, which will be 20 feet wide and paved. Our recommendation for this emergency access road is that it be tapered at the internal road and also gated at Ridge Road so as to minimize traffic. The last comment that we have regarding recommended changes is modifications to the PD agreement based on some of the items that we noted. Nothing major, just mostly housekeeping items. So our recommendation on page three of our letter is a recommendation to the township board to grant approval of the preliminary plan development, subject to six conditions as noted in our letter. That concludes our report and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Very much for that. Do we have a project sponsor for this one?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move to open the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we've got a motion to open the public hearing at 7:19 by Commissioners Zuber and support by Commissioner Okon. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Welcome.
Good evening. I am Mike Knowles with Diffin Umler. We are the engineers for the project. I am here with Joe Score with Polty Homes of Michigan. We're very pleased to be back here for our fourth public meeting on this particular project. As you know, we were here once before for the rezoning of the Krupp parcel. That was 14 or 15 acres of this overall assembly of 38 acres and netting out the road right-of-ways that will be dedicated, it comes up to 36 acres. We are very excited about moving forward with this project. As Mr. Sloan noted, it's got a great amount of open space and a whole lot of preservation. We have wetlands on the site, which you can see in light green. My pointer doesn't really point at that screen very well, but in light green, you can see the wetlands that are delineated on the site. In dark green, you can see the preservation areas on the site. So with the clearing that will be necessary to develop this property, there are several tree replacements that are required. Overall, there's about 400 trees that are proposed on this property, new trees to be planted on this property. And so we highlighted those areas in pink. Obviously, we're not going to be planting new trees in the wetlands or in the preserved woodlands, so because we are saving so much of the open space, it becomes difficult to find areas to plant new trees. So it'll be a wonderful development that is chock full of existing natural features and greatly enhanced open spaces. We have, during the course of our public hearing for the rezoning, we met some of the neighbors and we've had the opportunity to meet with those neighbors since that time. I personally met with Mr. and Mrs. Rowe, who are the properties adjacent to the north property line. Mr. and Mrs. Rowe are very nice people and we got to walk the property line and take a look with the plans to see which trees were scheduled for clearing and which trees would not be cleared and to look at their preferences for screening. They have a really neat setup over there with some llamas and just a beautiful, beautiful little setup over there. And so we walked the area and in fact, I spoke with Mr. Rowe again today and we were sort of kicking around some of the different species of trees that we might be able to plant in those purple areas along the north side of the site there that would be suitable for screening for both the new residents and for Mr. and Mrs. Rowe. We also met with several neighbors, well, actually, one representative of several neighbors, Mr. Dionne, and they're very interested in the natural beauty designation of the road and it is really a fantastic road. As you travel north on Ridge Road, it gets better and better the further north you go. It's got all the natural beauty features that really qualify a road to be qualified as natural beauty, including the canopy that reaches across and creates kind of a tunnel. It's sort of devoid of those features closer to Warren Road where we're proposing the entrance. As Mr. Sloan noted, there's only five trees that are coming out as a result of our development within the road right-of-way on Ridge Road at the entrance, but because we have over 400 additional trees that are going to be planted, we have a fantastic opportunity to enhance the natural beauty. And so we've already met with Mr. Dionne on that and kind of worked around some ideas about some of the native species to be planted in there. And we also had a great meeting with Wayne County. So we were fortunate enough to get that meeting and they were very supportive of the rural cross-section that we're proposing along Ridge Road and they were even open to us doing some plantings within the road right-of-way, which we thought we'd get a little pushback on that, but we didn't. They said as long as, you know, we maintain our site distances and look out for the safety of the residents entering and leaving from that entrance, that they were all for it. So we'll probably do some low-growing native species along the frontage there with some trees set back further from the road right-of-way to really enhance this corridor, to make it, you know, comparable to some of the great vistas that are further north. They were also very willing to take a look at minimizing the road cross-section for the proposed paving by reducing the taper lane, which you see there that kind of goes north past the entrance along that little pink slice. They wanted our paving to end right at the entrance and eliminate the taper lanes going into the entrance. So those are some of the details that we're going to work out as we go through the final PD, the site plan, and the final engineering and permitting. But we're very excited with the reception that we did get at the county to really enhance this as a natural beauty road. So we also went through some of the technical details of different types of transitions. For example, in the emergency access that we have to the north, we were trying to minimize the impact there as well. And so we located the road along the existing Krupp driveway to try to minimize any clearing that would be needed along that road. Now, that driveway is not wide enough to be an emergency access vehicle that would accommodate, say, a fire truck, so we do have to widen it somewhat. It'll be 20 feet wide, it'll be paved with gates on both ends, so it will not be a thoroughfare for the residents. It'll simply be for emergency life safety personnel only. And so we've got some transition details from where the paving ends and the gravel road starts that the county prefers and we're working those in. Oh, thank you. Yeah, so this is a, this plan was submitted in response to some of the review comments and you can see in here, the property goes all the way to that thick black line, right under the cross-section BB, you see a long, thick, black line right there. That's the property line and that's where the heavy trees are. The trees that are, that you see in bold are the trees that are going to come out as a result of the development and the trees that are in light, they're very difficult to see on the screen, but those are the ones that are saved. And the bulk of those trees are on the south side of that road and so we tried to minimize the impact and you can even see the Krupp driveway kind of trailing along the inside of that. One really nice thing about this plan is you see that big circle right where the orange sidewalk ends, there's that big circle there. That's 104-inch quad silver maple. So it's one of the fantastic trees on the site, one of the largest tree on the site, one of them that the Rowes were very interested in seeing if we could save and we've configured it so that we've minimized the clearing in that area and given it a wide berth to stay out of its critical root zone and drip line. So that'll be, that'll be a fantastic specimen to have within the neighborhood and for the neighbors to enjoy as well. So we've really done our homework on this one. We're excited about continuing on through the process and we're here for questions if you have some. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that said, we've opened the public hearing, correct? So I'm going to go to the audience and ask, who would like to talk about this project? Who has anything to say? Any comments, questions concerned? Come on up.
Oh, my name is Junie Morrell, 7755 North Ridge Road. Now, the driveway that you were talking about, the emergency drive, are there going to be trees planted all the way across or all the way down that emergency road that we're not going to see the homes? I mean, our property is right next to the rows and my concern is will we, will there be blockage of the subdivision so we don't have to see it, you know, because we have our own little heaven on earth.
You might want to come back up.
Sure.
I mean, at this point, this is kind of a preliminary layout and we haven't gotten to the details of a landscape plan yet. That'll come later on, but Mike can address that since he's been out there and knows what he can fit in the area.
Thank you for your question, Mrs. Morrell. Yes, if you go, if you jump back one more, Patrick, to that one you were just showing, yeah, as you see, the area in green, those are area, that's the area that's going to be preserved. So there are a ton of trees packed in through there. There's not going to be room to plant anything in there because we're preserving all of the existing trees except for within the pavement and the transition from the edge of the pavement to the existing grade. We're trying to match the existing grade very closely. So you see in pink where there are some thin areas or where there is some clearing proposed, those are all going to be planted with new trees. So there'll be a minimum of a 30-foot buffer along that north line to screen all of those northern properties, but the bulk of it, as you can see in that deep, dark green, are the existing woodlands. So there'll be, there'll be a fantastic screen there and we agree with you. It's very beautiful. We'd like to save it. We know that our new residents will appreciate it as well. So thank you for your question.
So that 30-foot buffer to the north is already, the buffer is already there, in other words.
Yeah.
You don't have to plant anything.
Okay, Mike, clarify, the buffer between the road and the Morrell's property is not 30 feet wide?
No, the buffer, excuse me.
The buffer here.
He's got the property up near Ridge Road.
Along this line, this third feature, was originally proposed as 20 feet and we expanded it as a result of some of the review comments. We have an assistant open space perimeter around it, but this is quite a bit, it's probably twice as wide, so there's about 60 feet down there. 20 feet of paving and the rest of it, so 40 feet in total, will be wooded. And you can see that the bulk of the woods that are to remain are down near south of it, there are some to the north of it, and it's heavily wooded in the whole area down there, so I hope to answer your question.
You want to come back up to the podium, please? You want to come back up to the podium, please? We can't hear you.
Drive to the back.
Take it to the microphone, please.
I'm sorry. Would that be consistent from the beginning of the drive all the way back to the back end of Krupp's property?
The emergency drive is following the same path as the driveway. Mrs. Morrell, the path of the emergency driveway is following the same path as the existing driveway, it's just being widened out a little bit. So they're only doing the clearing that's necessary to get that 20-foot lane in. That's all the clearing they're doing, okay? So. Go ahead and stay up there until you get all your questions answered.
Okay. Okay, we're starting at Ridge Road. When you're going down the emergency area.
Yes, so at Ridge Road, it's about 60 feet wide.
Okay.
The pavement is 20. Can you flip back to the emergency blow-up, please, Mr. Sloan? Thank you. So here's Ridge Road, and here is a 20-foot wide pavement section. So there is approximately 5 feet from the edge of pavement to the edge of the property here, and approximately 35 feet from the edge of pavement to the property to the south. So all of these trees that you see in here, these existing trees, and those are only the ones that are tagged trees, because the smaller ones are not required to be tagged, are, it's full of trees down through there. So this is the 60-foot cross-section that'll be going down through here, and you can see a cross-section through here where there's trees on both sides with 20-foot of pavement. And that runs from Ridge Road all the way till the property opens up. Once it opens up, we have a huge area, if this is 60, that's about 100 feet of a nice big woods, including that 104-inch silver maple that I mentioned. And as you continue on, there's another woodlot that is saved just past the emergency entrance, and then there's a 30-foot landscape easement. So where the trees are saved, they'll remain. Where it's thin right now, because you got the driveway that we're getting rid of, the driveway, you can see goes down through here, and then it's going to end. So we'll have to plant where the driveway was, all full of trees. It'll be 30-foot wide with a nice landscape buffer all the way to the end.
Okay, great. Sounds like that'll be very nice, and help.
Thank you.
Patrick, is that emergency access going to remain there throughout? I mean, it's not just for the construction or anything like that. This is going to remain. Who's going to maintain that? Will that be the association that maintains that? And that's going to be just pure gravel, right?
Paved.
That will be paved?
It'll be asphalt. In working with the fire department, in this particular case, asphalt would be preferred because of the length of it. If it were to be gravel, it might go unmaintained, unplowed, but with asphalt, it'll be maintained as a smooth surface, which is why we also recommend a gate at the front of Ridge Road so it doesn't become usable for non-emergency vehicles. These are the recommendations of the fire marshal to meet the fire code requirements for secondary access.
Secondary access, okay. So my question would be, because it'll be paved, won't that actually be encouraging just regular activity from regular folks?
It'll be gated.
Okay.
Residents have no access to gate.
They'll have swing gates at both ends so that it can be just used for emergency purposes. We don't want traffic through there necessarily because then they'll...
It'll be locked with a Knox lock, one of the fire safety locks that the fire department and police all have keys for, but it's not going to be open to the residents.
Okay, and the street, as it ends going up to the emergency access, there'll be, what, signage or gate there as well that'll prevent people from going out that way?
Yes. Correct.
It'll be gated at both ends of that access, yeah.
Anyone else from the audience? Oh, yes, sir.
I'm Philip Cutnick. I live at 7739 Ridge Road, the other part where this emergency. So I guess my question was, I know where the gravel road is right now. Where is the pavement going to be? Is it going on both sides of what that was? Is it going strictly to the south?
It's a good question, and you can see it here, sir. You see these light lines right down through here? That's the existing driveway. Kind of wander sort of back and forth. So you see, here's the existing entrance coming out, so it's centered right on it. It kind of follows the north line of it and widens it out to the south, just follows it all along till we get to the point where our development widens out, and then we'll abandon the driveway and plant a full of trees.
Well, and generally the same path, because you're using the base of the driveway as part of the base of the emergency access.
My question is, which side, that driveway is not 20 feet.
Right.
Which side of...
That's what he was showing you, the lighter line on the drawing is the existing driveway.
See these two lines right here?
Yes.
Those are the edges of the existing driveway.
Okay.
And then you see the grade? That's the proposed new pavement. So this is the existing driveway. Here it gets widened out on both sides. Here as the driveway kind of mediators off towards the property line, it becomes the north edge of the new driveway, and the paving is all to the south. So as that driveway...
So what is this, though?
That's the property line.
It won't go any further north than the existing driveway, so if it needs to be widened out, it'll be widened out to the south.
Since it's going to be blocked on both ends, who is going to maintain that area?
The association will be required to maintain it and plow it, so for emergency access.
Cut the grass?
Oh, well, it'll be a natural area. Hopefully, there'll be no grass to cut.
Grass?
If there's grass, the association will have to mow it.
Okay, so they have to mow it to be the problem.
If it's currently being mowed, they'll have to continue to mow it.
They'll mow it right now.
Okay, all right.
I'm not going to if it's part of an association.
So, Mike and the covenants and the master D to make sure that the maintenance area is identified.
Absolutely. Thank you for your question.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, yes, sir. Come on up.
My name is Paul Anderson. I live at 49650 Warren Road. Can you go back to the main plan, please? So how far up is the actual paving going on Ridge Road? How far beyond?
The first entrance, that entrance is about 400 feet north of Warren.
Okay. Didn't it indicate that there were 1,650 feet of paved road on Ridge that would be on Ridge?
1,675 feet from Warren Road north to the emergency access.
Okay.
But only the first 400 or so feet will be paved just to that southernmost entrance.
Wouldn't it make more sense to actually have the access go to Warren Road behind the other side of the retention?
The county won't allow access to Warren Road. One, you have to cross the wetland, and two, the entrance would be too close to the intersection. So they require at least 300 feet separation from the intersection. So when the church came in several years ago, and we had the church proposal approved here, the church ended up having to get a variance from the zoning board of appeals to allow it to be on Ridge Road because Wayne County wouldn't allow that access onto Warren Road because of geometry on Warren Road.
That would be the preferred. Would that eliminate the need for the paving then if it was out to Warren Road?
Right, but they won't allow access out to Warren Road.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's the problem, is you can't get access because you have to...
In that mitigation, the light green is the wetland area, correct?
Light green is the wetland area, the dark green is the preserved area, the pink area is the...
So the one road is crossing the wetlands there?
They'll have a minor wetland crossing, yes. They have to apply to the state for a wetlands permit, and depending on how much they're impacting, I think it's, what, less than three tenths of an acre? What's the limit, Mike? If it's less than half an acre, they don't have to mitigate. If it's over, I think, over half an acre, then they have to mitigate, and they can mitigate on-site. They would have to provide a plan to the state for the wetland permit, so.
What's the plan along the property to the southwest side here? What's the plan for the tree line and everything else, which is already, most of it's treeed, except there's a current road, kind of a cul-de-sac that runs on the north edge, the south edge of this property? What's the plan for that as far as trees? I see it says open space, and it has some...
Pink areas where they're filling in with trees. All those pink areas will be where they're filling in thin areas with trees.
Okay, so what's the green, dark green area?
That's the existing trees.
Okay, but there's no existing trees there because there's a road.
Well, the road is further up a little bit, I think, so. The private road, yeah.
Right north of the property line.
It's right, you can see it if you go up a couple sheets to the aerial photo.
Yeah. So they'll get more specific as they develop site plans, so.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking, is there...
Here's the road, so those are the trees that are being preserved, and these are the trees that are being preserved.
So...
So in looking at that, it's right on that property line.
So this 30 feet of trees is the 30 feet of buffer, and then this area right in here is the wetland, and then all of these trees are being preserved, and any thin areas are being planted.
Mike, he wants to know where the existing road bed is, or you're filling that in with trees.
Exactly.
So this is the existing road bed, and this is the preservation strip along there.
But it's not 30 feet there, I can tell you that.
We went out and tagged all the trees.
I understand, so it's going to be into that roadway. I mean, I know, that's my property.
Yes.
So you're putting what types of trees in that area?
400 new trees of conifers, deciduous trees, there's a whole bunch of them. So we're going to open, we're going to plant in any bare spots, and we're going to be hard-pressed to be able to fit them all on the site. So any place that's a bare spot and open space is going to be well-represented on the landscape.
And same on the eastern side of that, basically, which would be the eastern side.
Yeah, in terms of the planting plan, sir, we'll get more specific with the planting plan when they bring plans back next time around. This is just a very preliminary plan, so we're talking about big concepts here. So when they get it more finite, once they do their engineering and they know exactly where things are going to be, and they do a detailed analysis of the grades and where the existing trees are, then they'll know where they have to fit things in.
Okay.
Okay, so right now, we're just kind of, they've done their best shot right now based on the existing survey of the property of where things are going to lay out.
Okay, great.
And thank you for that. We're always encouraging the project people to communicate with the nearby residents. Anyone else have any comments, concerns?
I have one question.
Yep, go to the mic.
I have an idea as to when this is going to start the actual project, the building.
I do.
Okay.
So this is a long process. We're right in the very beginning. So we're projecting that we'll have everything approved and all permits in hand in about January, and groundbreaking will be around April 15th of next year, 2020. It should take about between three and four months to do the development. At that point, the roads will be paved, the new trees will be planted, Polte will be opening up their model. Often, they will prairie-build their model, which is at the same time as the development is going in. And so that's about July, August 1st is when it'll be open for sale, and people will be able to come put down a deposit and order their new home.
12 to 18 months.
I was liking that story.
The short answer is, yeah, 12 to 18 months. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, come on up.
7739 Ridge. My only question is, during that development phase, will that access road be used at all, or will they be using the main entrance to bring things in? Because my house would be the only house affected by anything going that way.
That's a great question. No, that will not become a haul road. There is a water main connection that will run down through the center of that road and tie in at Ridge Road, but other than that water main installation and the emergency access itself, it won't be a haul road for the development. Good question.
Your name will be away from me.
Yes, ma'am.
Except during the construction of the water main and the road, so.
Okay, I think that was the last comment. Do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion to close the public hearing at 7:45 by Commissioner Zubor in support by Commissioner Eganberger. Any further discussion on that? All in favor, oh, you want to, you know, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to the commission, Commissioner Okon, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's a great project. I really appreciate you working with the residents and maintaining that beautiful road as much as possible. I think it's, the houses look amazing. Thank you.
Mr. Eganberger?
Yeah, thank you. I think the fact that you're able to keep so many of the trees is terrific, and I hope we'll continue to make it a lovely kind of foresty place, I guess. I think one of my only questions is, I'm surprised that you don't have any options of first-floor masters in any of your models, given that I'm becoming an active adult age. I know that that's the sort of thing that at some point my husband and I are going to have to look at, and I was surprised that you didn't have something like that.
No, we model it after the Westbury neighborhood, and there's some wonderful plans, and sometimes in response to market requests, Polte does have first-floor masters that they're able to fit on these types of lots. It's funny because a lot of people will ask for a first-floor master until they take a look at a first-floor master when it comes to pricing on a per-square-foot basis. It becomes a little bit more on a price-per-square-foot basis. However, if the market is there, Polte's got first-floor masters that they offer in this product line, that they could offer at this particular location as well.
Thanks.
Now, I was sleeping the flex space.
Yeah, I did see the flex space, yeah, and then there was the owner's retreat. We weren't sure what that was.
It's for the owner to decide.
All right, my concerns are on the edges, the fringes. We've talked about some of it, particularly to the north. Definition on the site plan, I don't know if Jeff can pull up, it wasn't the one we were looking at before, it was one of the other ones. It defines a 30-foot natural buffer to the west and a 30-foot greenbelt buffer to the south. What's the difference?
There isn't one, it's just the drafter, you know. Different day, different guy, it's all the same.
Basically, you're just going to leave what's there there.
Open space is open space.
There'll be a conservation easement placed over that area.
Okay, the next question would be, and this is probably for Patrick or Jeff, the beauty road designation, obviously, you know, it's designed to have just the gravel road or just the natural road. Why, okay, that small segment of concrete on that road, is that, that's just, that's just the county's requirements?
Well, this because of the amount of traffic on Ridge Road and the additional traffic that's going to be added to Ridge Road. Right now, Ridge Road is over 1,000 trips per day even without their development. So natural beauty road specification is really, doesn't say that can't be paved, it's going, it says do the minimal, what you need to accommodate, you know, reasonable access through the road, so we're not taking out huge swaths of trees to get, you know, 120-foot wide road in. So in this particular case, the cross-section that the county has agreed to allow them proceed with is a rural cross-section, no sidewalks, you know, hugging the ditch or minimizing the amount of ditch adjacent to the side of the road so we're not having to take out more vegetation along either side of the road. So, and as Mike, you know, demonstrated, there's not a whole lot on their side of the road left. I mean, there's, it's just, it's pretty open. So with them being able to enhance it, they're going to fill in the right-of-way area to the degree that the county will allow them with native trees and shrubs to kind of re-vegetate that area so it's more like the area to the north as it grows in. So because the, there's a paving threshold in our ordinance of 1,000 trips per day, basically, that's the threshold we use for any development on a dirt road. If it's over 1,000 trips per day, we generally require it to be paved so it can be maintained. That's to the point where you can't maintain it any longer when you get a certain amount of traffic on it. So in this particular area, since the intersection is paved and you've already got a paved throat here, this is basically just taking it up to their entrance so that we can get a majority of the traffic on a paved road to the development entrance. The development entrance for the subdivision on the east side of the road is a lot further north, so, you know, they're already generating traffic on the east side of Ridge Road with, you know, the subdivision that went in many years ago. But that's, then if we want to take pavement all the way to the north, and that's impacting the people that have frontage lots on the west side of the road. And so we're trying to do whatever minimally necessary it is to accommodate what the development standards are. And one of the things we need to think about is, you know, the township and the county is also, you know, this fall will be starting the paving work of Ridge Road between Ford and Warren Road. So once you, you know, because of the maintenance issues along that section, what happens is when you pave a road, you're going to increase the traffic on it automatically because it's going to be easier to drive on. As the development moves west, you know, we've got a lot of people needing to go up to Ann Arbor Road and to M fourteen and they're not driving over to Beck Road and up, they're going up Ridge Road to Ann Arbor Road. We got a lot of school traffic that goes up Ann Arbor, you know, up Ridge Road to Ann Arbor Road and over. So, you know, we don't wanna be hung on, you know, on the, you know, financial hook to pave that four hundred feet in five years when we anticipate that we may end up having to look at paving more of Ridge Road. So at this point, we wanna get the county locked into that rural cross-section so they're not requiring a full width, you know, you know, construction along Ridge Road. So we're trying to be as sensitive as we can, you know, within the guise of the, of the natural beauty road guidelines. So I guess that's the best way I can explain it, so.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I know the public hearing's closed, but just to add a point of emphasis, I was the county commissioner at the time that wrote the ordinance that had these designated as natural beauty roads. And so I can tell you, Mr. Guley is exactly right, that although there is a misconception that prohibits paving, there is not. Paving is permitted, but what it does provide is what Mr. Guley describes. Extra attention to detail as to how to preserve the natural beauty area of the road as to plantings, non-sidewalks and those things has to be employed in these designs. The actual fact that they're having them pave this to the entrance is an attempt to preserve the rest of the bed of Ridge Road because think about if they didn't, the actual impact on Ridge Road to the entrance would be so dramatic compared to the rest of the road. It would create issues that we didn't have today. So it's actually, by paving to the entrance, it's designed to preserve as much of the character of the roadway as possible with the minimal cross-section they're doing and not cause damage to the very section north of Warren Road. So it is allowed under the natural beauty road designation. We took the designation from experience that Open County had, most of their natural beauty roads are in fact paved. They're just done with a minimal cross-section of asphalt that preserves trees along the right-of-way, provides different sightlines and plantings and those kinds of things. So Mr. Guley is right, and this is the first instance in Wayne County where they've actually employed that paving cross-section. So congratulations to Pulte for getting it, it'll be a great result for the township and those residents along there, so.
Okay, since, since you, stay there, since you're there, but this is unofficial, since the public hearing is closed. Are there also specific species for enhancement to the public road features? Like you're gonna plant some trees along Ridge, right?
Yeah, and so the county will essentially depend on and delegate to the township's, what I would say, very effective landscape process and officers as it relates to determination of those in the right-of-way. They'll review them, but they'll count on the township's plan review to kind of determine ultimately what's going on, so.
So Lee Thurston, my office, she's a native landscape specialist, she's familiar with the native beauty road issue. She dealt with some restoration last year on one of these sections of native, you know, natural beauty road that DTE came in and did some clearing on. So we will actually consult with probably the original study that was done for that, for the Northwest Kent homeowners, which they did a detailed inventory of what the native species were in that area. So we'll try to match what native species are, because you have to look at soils and you have to look at the exposure and those kinds of things to make sure you choose the right species that are gonna thrive in that particular environment.
Yeah, and they're gonna seek also, I think Mr. Guley referenced, or, I'm sorry, Patrick, in the analysis, low growing, so you don't have sightline issues, is that, I was also, in full disclosure, one of the developers of the subdivision across the road, Pheasant Ridge, and we dealt with many of these issues and that's why we ultimately remained totally naturalized in there because the county wasn't prepared at that time to actually engage in that conversation. So, yeah, but the county will depend and defer greatly to what the township decides in there. But they'll just review for growth to make sure it doesn't come into the roadway and height, not destroying sightline issues.
Okay, so pavement is not prohibited, as you said, right?
Not prohibited. It's a different cross-section than what most people will see, I mean, it's gonna be more, it, you know, it's gonna look a little different than what most people, but it's one that protects the roadway base and its element, yeah.
And sidewalks also?
No sidewalks.
No sidewalks.
Okay, because I see sidewalk indicated in the southern part of the project.
Those are internally, those are with the outside of the right-of-way, within the project, I assume, right?
Well, I think this was designed before their meeting with the county. So this is something that, once we have a more final design on the roadway of Ridge Road, we can discuss what kind of pedestrian access, if any, goes from the entrance down to Warren Road. We may try, we may try to get an accessway from the entrance down to Warren Road, not within the right-of-way and that's, that's more natural, so, so they can get access to the intersection if they wanna walk down there and walk in that direction.
Okay, thank you very much.
Broken my personal rule twice by speaking on projects, I'm not actually representing somebody, so I'll sit down unless you're the, okay, great, thanks.
Okay, my last concern has to do with the agreement between you and the township. You know, this is something that is probably something we may wanna look at for the future, if not this project also. It has to do with Section twelve condominium documents, this is a site condo planned, right?
Correct.
Which means it's gonna be a private subdivision.
Right.
I notice terminology in here in terms of, you know, if, if the association is not created, there's protections in there for the township. There's no protections in here for the, for the residents, for the investors in here in terms of whether or not the infrastructure gets completed or maintained.
This is legal language that our attorneys came up as boilerplate language. As they move through the process, they decide what form of ownership is going to be and they will prepare the proper documents that you will see as part of site plan. Under a site condominium, they'll have a master deed and condominium documents just like any other condominium will have under the state condominium act.
The reason I'm bringing this up is because with our recent, or I should say from last year, voter requisition of taxes for roads and the road taxes we already pay, subdivisions like this are left on their own. The only, only way you get roads paved in the future is by your dues. Even though you pay the taxes and this is gonna be, you know, pretty good taxes on these properties, but there's no protection for, for the, for the residents in terms of the maintenance, should these projects be incomplete? And I have no reason to believe that this would not get completed, but it can happen.
Hey, okay Greg, we take letter of credits from the developer to assure that those things will be completed. We take a financial security prior to approval of the final site plan and recording of the condominium. We will not allow recording of the condominium until we have a financial security in place pursuant to our ordinances. So under our condominium ordinance, local condominium ordinance, we require letters of credit to be placed for all the utilities, roads and infrastructure for the development as must-do items. So if they fail to perform, we will send a letter to the bank, say, send us the money, we'll contract out the remaining work.
Okay, all right, the, and the condominium documents that are provided, this is pretty much the usual business, but one of the, one of the problems that I see, because I live in one of these, is you get the development phase bylaws and then it's up to the association to have those redone or amended or what have you, which is a great expense. Why don't we automatically require two sets of documents, the development phase and then the, the?
What do you mean?
Well, there's.
The master deed is the master deed.
Well, it's a master deed, but the bylaws will always dictate while in the development phase, yada, 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 and then after that, this happens, et cetera, et cetera, and then it's up to the associations to, to get all of that extracted from the development phase because it's no longer appropriate.
What do you mean extracted?
Well, taken from the bylaws because it doesn't pertain to the, to the association anymore. So they have to amend it, which is a great expense to the association.
Why would they have to amend it? It's just not applicable anymore after the development phase, it just goes by the wayside.
Because the terminology, the terminology is very confusing.
I can offer, he is in a condominium association done prior to the current and the most recent, prior to that current condominium or condominium statute. The last two versions of the statutes require the complete documents in one place at one time. So what you went through in an older association doesn't exist anymore. The entirety and the complete document as the master duty bylaws are approved before he gives them a permit for the site plan. And so that problem's solved by the statute now, the new, the two new condominiums.
Yeah, we don't have phased-in master deeds anymore.
Ah, I see, okay.
I wasn't sure where you were going with that, Greg.
Yeah, yeah, because, because when you have, you know, the transitional control stage is totally different than, than in the development stage and the terminology changes, but you, as you read the bylaws, you're kinda confused, so what do they mean by that?
Well, there's the master deed and then there's the bylaws. The bylaws are a separate document that's referred to by the master deed and they're recorded together, okay.
Well, in my, in my particular situation, our sub was like early nineties, that terminology was in there, in the development stage, et cetera, et cetera. So that is a concern of mine and I know that there's financial guarantees that are, that are also put upon developers, but I'm just very concerned that site condominiums, you know, were, were growing. I mean, it's a third of the township's residential streets are private, which means that they're basically kind of helping to fund the other two-thirds and yet they have no protection for themselves. And this is gonna be adding to that, to that number.
And there are state statutes that require reserves to be placed in the HOA so that those funds build up. And, you know, as, as mentioned, those have changed over time and grown as sort of a response to the problems that people have when suddenly an association is faced with, say, a $200,000 road rebuilding project on, you know, twenty homes and everybody gets an assessment of $10,000 or, you know, I mean, it can, it can become difficult. And so that's why the state laws are now structured so that you have to have the proper level of reserves so that you can replace all of those components when their lifespan has completed.
Yeah, but the problem is the ten percent is not cumulative. So twenty-five years from now, when those roads need to be replaced, the money won't be there.
Oh.
That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay.
So, yeah, I understand that those, those kind of protections. But it looks like a good development, you know, I, I think that you've dotted a lot of i's and crossed a lot of t's. I do, do appreciate you communicating with the residents. Commissioner Zubor, did you have anything?
I can't think of anything that you all haven't already said about, we appreciate keeping the trees and working with the surrounding homeowners, so, thank you.
Commissioner Engel? Commissioner Graham Hudek?
On page two, you talk about the traffic impact and you did mention that and you're saying already we're at nine hundred vehicles down that road, is that correct, at least?
According to the applicant's traffic impact study that was measured in December of 2018, the measured trips on that day was nine hundred and eighteen vehicle trips. So we're already very close to a thousand as it is.
Usually when we see something like this, they widen the roads or they add lights, but since we're trying to keep the natural beauty road, how would we change that? What is, what do you think they would do, some suggestions, what Wayne County might do if we go, if they measure over a thousand with this?
Well, we're paving up to the entrance, that's the requirement of the ordinance.
You don't think they'll put any cutaways or anything like that near the driveways?
What do you mean cutaways?
You know, you, tapers.
They've actually, you're meeting with the county last week and they say they were going to reduce the tapers?
Yeah, so they asked us to eliminate the tapers from the entrance to the neighborhood because we were showing those on the plan. Rather just have the driveway come right up to the road, which is the normal thirty-foot radius, rather than to have those acceleration, deceleration tapers, because they're on the same page. They wanna minimize the impact, they know it's a natural beauty road, it's their regulations, subject to a state law that, that set it down to put it into the hands of the county, but they.
Plus, we're only dealing with a driveway that's serving thirty-six lots, we're not dealing with a driveway serving hundreds of lots. So the amount of inbound and outbound traffic isn't going to be extreme, it's just the general traffic will increase and will continue to increase with or without this project along Ridge Road.
Right, but wouldn't it make it more difficult for those residents to get out? Because we already have nine hundred vehicles passing those spots every day, if you wanna make left turnout.
Okay, that's ninety in peak hour, okay, when you have nine hundred basically during the day, your peak hour during the day is usually ninety in that peak hour, I don't think there's gonna be a problem getting in and out. The issue, the issue with a thousand trips per day is maintenance of the road, it's not necessarily congestion. Okay, a thousand trips per day isn't a whole lot of trips, that's only a hundred lots worth of trips. Okay, a hundred lot subdivision will generate a thousand trips, okay.
At peak times, though, when you're trying to pull out.
So when trips are basically, a trip is basically two ends, coming and going is two trips, okay. So at peak hour, ninety trips is forty-five coming and going, okay, so that's over an hour, that's only like one a minute. Okay, so you need to keep it in perspective. So the issue with a thousand trips per day and the paving threshold is maintenance of the road because after a thousand trips per day, the county has to get out there and grade it a lot more often and it becomes a lot more difficult to keep in a, in a safe and passable condition. So this is not a congestion issue or a safety issue, this is a road maintenance issue relative to the thousand trips.
Well, you hear a lot of residents on Ridge Road complaining about the congestion also and at peak times, when, you know, the buses, when you're trying to get to work, trying to, I mean, I know just in my neighborhood at those times, trying to get out on the Lily Road, you know, so I'm sure there's still gonna be a congestion issue.
And we're gonna have to deal with that as traffic increases in the western part of the township overall. And that's gonna be something that the board will probably have to do, just like what the board is, is dealing with right now on the section between, you know, between Ford Road and Warren Road. You know, we're in the process of paving that road to deal, not only to do with maintenance, but dealing with some general traffic issues. I don't think Ridge Road is congested in any matter of speaking, there's probably certain times of the day where it's busier than others. I wouldn't call Ridge Road congested. I mean, it's, but that's in the eye of the beholder, so.
Right, right, and as you said, when you had.
That's what people's perspectives are and what their expectations are. Congestion is based on what's your expectation of what you expect it to be on that road and that's what a level of service is, is based on what your expectations are. So on a rural road, you don't expect it to be that busy, but as all of our roads are getting busier, as, as we build out toward the western part of the township, so.
And as you pave the roads, you get more, more traffic there also, we know that.
Right, because it's easier to travel along them, I mean, people are going to avoid, you know, roads that they can't travel easily upon, so.
Just seems that we should think about that a little bit more beforehand.
Ma'am? Our public hearing is actually closed.
Okay, so.
I know, I know, we made, we made one exception, but we need to move on.
You can let her make her statement at the end when you're done, I guess, so.
And the one map at the top, we had, you had a lot of pink areas because you're removing some of the brush to put the emergency road in. So how big are those trees there that you're removing along that path?
There's not that many significant trees along there. The area in there kinda has a natural opening and there's the existing driveway down through there and so we're really kind of reforesting it along there. There's not a whole lot of trees that are being taken out through that area. There's a, within our package, there's a detailed tree inventory along with the tree list and there's, there's not a ton of them, we tried to, you know, there's a little bit of storm in there, little bit of grading transitions in there, but there's some open spaces over there right behind the Rose property that we're kind of filling in to create the screen, not a lot of clearing through there.
And then in terms of, I see, they have a lot of trees in the back, are you looking at putting any of the trees near the front of the driveways, near the front of the houses at all?
Yeah, so we're gonna comply with all of the street tree requirements, so there's trees in, in front as well.
They just don't, they're not shown here then?
They're not shown, they're, they're, you see there's a designation here down through here and that's the typical street tree treatment and it just.
Yeah, those wouldn't be.
With the conceptual plan rather than showing each of the trees, it basically says, you know, three trees per every one hundred-foot lot will be planted along the frontage on those. So yes, the typical treatment that you see in each neighborhood will be happening here as well.
So the, the tree replacement he's talking about are those things that he's doing to basically take care of the trees that he's removing for the development. He still has to meet all of the general requirements for street trees, road frontage landscaping and everything else. So he's, those hundreds of trees that he's talking about are on top of what our normal landscaping requirements are. So that's why they show these areas generally in pink, because that's where they've got room to put them, so.
Okay, I'm sure I'll have more questions on the congestion later, thank you.
Commissioner Charia?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment that I appreciate your entire approach and the preparedness that you have come here with today and talking to the neighbors. I, I think it's a very, very, very exemplary approach that Pulte is taking and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
From the commission? Nothing, no questions, concerns?
I'd like to make a motion.
You would?
I would, I know it's shocking. I move to recommend preliminary approval of the Arbor Glen Planned Development District on tax parcels as noted, as provided in the planned development agreement and plan documents, subject to revisions to the PD plans and PD agreement to include the following, a complete schedule of regulations and modifications, an illustrative landscape plan at final PDD review for the frontage areas along Warren Road and Ridge Road, removal of berms from the right-of-way areas and in frontages where clearing and grading is not otherwise proposed, a taper where the emergency access road connects to the internal road termination and a gate where the emergency access road connects to Ridge Road. And I think we actually were talking about gates at each end of that emergency access road at some point?
Yeah, I believe, I believe we did it.
It's not in the, it's not in the model motion, it just says a gate at the. It's not in the, it's not in the model motion. It just says a gate at the, a gate where the emergency access road connects to Ridge Road.
We need to add that to the motion.
Yeah, so we would like gates at each end of that emergency access road, architectural plans that meet the requirements of Section 26.06 of the zoning ordinance, and a revised PD agreement that incorporates corrections noted as well as township engineer and township attorney review of Section 15.
Support? I almost forgot what we were doing.
You don't think we read a story?
On the floor by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Okon. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing unsene. Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Charia?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudek?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes. So this would then go to the trustees?
On the 25th of the month.
25th, okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for enduring.
Of course.
It is a process, isn't it? Yes. And thank you all for your comments.
Yes.
For sure. Yes. You want to get up to the podium there?
77, 55 North Ridge Road, Juney Moore. Okay. Right now, you're talking about traffic. The speed limit is 25 miles per hour. It's like a racetrack right there. It doesn't, it doesn't matter what the, what conditions the road is in or anything. People take advantage of it, and they split through there, and it's, it's very dangerous. I mean, the residents have a hard time now just getting out of their driveway in time. So, you know, that needs to be looked into also because it is. And over the years, it's got worse and worse and worse.
Two words: public safety. Got to call them. That's all we can do.
Selective enforcement. They'll get out there and do selective enforcement.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, our, oop.
You're doing great.
Let the, the room clear.
Yeah. Give it to the job. Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, our third agenda item is a site plan for Canton Retail Management III, also known as Hayden's or the former Hayden's. We're considering a site plan review for property located south of Ford and east of Lots over by Home Depot. Jeff, could you tell us more?
Yes. Several months ago, you saw a special land use request for this site. This is kind of a redo of the Hayden's site, originally the Don Pablo's site at the corner of Lots and Ford Road, approximately 1.47 acres. The applicant's proposing to renovate, divide the existing 7,700 square foot building into a multi-tenant commercial building. As you mentioned, special land use approval was allowed to allow for office, medical and dental clinics, training and education centers, standard restaurant and bar with accessory drive-through windows, specialty retail, business and personal service establishments, and general retail uses within the building. So, once the building is up and moving, any of those uses are fair game for future tenants. The site plan updates the entire exterior of the building, removes some parking in the rear, which would allow for a loading area and access to the trash enclosure. The trash enclosure would be moved from directly behind the building currently to the southeast corner of the site, and a pickup lane would be added to the east side of the building. Project sponsors requested a modification to allow more than the maximum amount of parking and to be able to remove mature trees and replant the Ford Road burn areas with new landscaping. I think they, there's a perception that there's some visibility issues to the building. The, based on the staff review, they've got 10, 10 parking spaces that are on, on the existing west side of the building that we had made a, a recommendation to remove. Let's get to the right plan here. Here's the new site. The 10 spaces to the left side of the building or the west side of the building, one of the issues there is there isn't any sidewalk on that side of the building, and they've got excess parking spaces and they could, and, and we've got the original Don Pablo's building, they're, they received a modification to narrow down the width of the foundation landscaping beds on the front of the building and the east side of the building. So this would allow them to get a wider landscape bed in and get a sidewalk in so that the people that are parking along the west edge of the Lots Road side of the building could get up on a sidewalk and into the building. They feel that they need additional parking in the future based on what tenants may or may, may go in there. So they're asking for that parking to be kept. And then the other issue is, is Lee and I looked at the landscape plan, and they're removing a lot of the mature trees along Lots and Ford Road, especially near the corner, and then they want to replant in accordance with the landscape standards. We're, you know, we're not highly thrilled about getting rid of mature landscaping. The trees have been limbed up. They could probably be limbed up a little bit more and trimmed to, you know, retain visibility to the building. So those, those are some of the things that I would like their project sponsor to address and that you can discuss with them. So we're recommending approval of the site plan for the multi-tenant building, subject to, you know, you guys addressing those two issues and from the above analysis. So we'll bring up the, the rest of the plans as we talk about them. The, the building, the exterior, basically it'd be a total new exterior to the building. It's mostly brick. They've kind of incorporated Aspen Dental kind of motifs into the building. We've asked them to kind of continue with those, those motifs around the rest of the building to kind of make the building look more cohesive in terms of using the similar color, color brick, the same stone on the base of the building, and those kinds of things. I think the architect has done a, a great job with the exterior of the building and making sure it looks like one building instead of two, so. Brian?
Thank you, Jeff.
Jeff, and I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm actually representing the project sponsor on as opposed to violating my personal rules on the other items. And I'll just, you've had a.
Yes, you're lengthening our meeting.
I know. I was trying to help move them along and, yeah.
You did, you did.
Doing my best. But, so let me just get to the point on the items Mr. Goulet raised. You know, we are, what, his analysis is absolutely accurate as it applies the standards, the basic standards of our ordinance against the proposed site in terms of parking spaces and trees. What we also have, though, in this site, so if it were a new site, you say absolutely, we understand the standards, we understand the reasons for them and whatever, whether it's parking or trees or whatever. We have this site, on this site, the benefit of being informed by the history of the site itself, and that's why we are pursuing this issue on parking spaces and some of the trees. What do I mean by that? Well, Jeff mentioned Don Pablo's used to be there, then Hayden's was there. And so this site has had some difficulty as it relates to succeeding. We think we address that by diversifying and dividing up the building, by creating the possibility of up to three tenants in there. So we hope in the future you will never see the entirety of this, this building dark again because, you know, if it's, if we have three tenants, then, you know, if one goes dark, two are still going, and we'll try to re-tenant the empty space. The only thing I would say as it relates to our, our basis, and, and I could try to make it all flowery and long-winded, but I'm just going to get to the point on it, as it relates to the parking spaces, right now, we are hopeful we may have a, a dentist for a part of the building. We're hopeful we may have a restaurant for a part of the building and maybe the mid-use, we aren't quite sure. But those are all potential tenants. We may end up with 2/3 of this building being a restaurant. And we, or could end up theoretically with the entire building being a restaurant. So our desire is to have the site plan designed and approved so it handles all circumstances. If you recall, if you were ever there during Don Pablo's or Hayden, parkings, parking was always an issue. And, and so we, that's why we've tried to preserve those 10 spaces on the chance that, based on the tenant mix, and Mr. Goulet addressed it in his comments, based on what the tenant mix could be or is in the future, we would hate to have to say, oh, well, you know, we didn't get those 10 spaces and whatever, we need to come back and try to get them now. That absolutely makes no sense. We're trying to prepare the site for all eventualities going forward as it relates to the parking spaces. That's why we're trying to essentially keep those 10 spaces. And while I recognize if we didn't have the 10 spaces, we could not only have a sidewalk and a little more landscaping, it's a little more than ironic that we're also then dealing with the issue that we have excessive trees and landscaping along the exterior of the property. So we, we are, we have a site that is essentially blessed with a lot of deciduous trees, very thick and whatever. So as it relates to that, our desire would be able to essentially reduce and replant some of those. As tenants have looked at the building, they have raised the issue with us to say, listen, when it was a restaurant, restaurants on their own tend to become destination locations. Over time, people kind of get to know them. When we are switching, when we have one of three tenants in here, they're a little more nervous about people being able to see who they are when they're driving by, especially when they're paying rent for a Ford Rose, Ford Road type site. So site visibility is a big deal. So if, if I were given my druthers, we are, the most important issue to us is the parking. If we had to live with the trees and trim them up some more, we certainly could do that. We would prefer to be able to have both those items because it's really about protecting the long-term viability of this site for every eventuality that may or may not come as it relates to tenants. If we end up with a restaurant for the entire site, we need those 10 spaces right now. And we'd hate to have to come back and say, hey, we need to amend the site plan to bring the 10 spaces back in. So that's why the parking spaces, we, we've asked this approach. As to the trees, we've looked at various possibilities, and certainly we can, we could work with the existing trees. We have some challenge with the trees on the corner. I, I, one side note, as it relates to future site plan, I've been often thinking I need to recommend to us that we make an amendment on our site plan that we don't have trees within 25 feet of stop signs or potential stop signs and subdivisions. So the plan you just looked at, hopefully when you look at the landscape plan coming in, because I can't tell you how many times we've had people not see stop signs because we had trees too close to them. So we have trees too close to all of our signs and our site on this one. It's not a matter of life and death and safety. It's a matter of just the viability of the site. And so with that, those are the, those are our responses to that. I'm glad to answer any questions. I have Heather from All rig here, Eric from Stonefield, and Beau from Detroit Architecture. So we could, we're prepared to answer any kind of question you may have, so.
Okay, I'm just gonna open it up to the panel for anyone who has anything to add or subtract or what have you. Go ahead. You just look like you, you want to say something.
I agree with Jeff along in terms of trimming the trees up higher. You can always bring in people, in my opinion, with more signage, you know, in terms of that. Also, I think as we look to the future towards technology, you're going to see people being able to find things more with technology and not utilize so much parking. You're going to have more ride sharing, and hopefully we go more towards that way as people try to reduce their, their footprints. But I really think that the trees should just be trimmed up more and see what you could do with signage. Would that be DDA? That would be DDA, correct, or no?
Lines on their berm or not, the DDA takes care of the landscaping in front of the walls. They, the project sponsor takes care of all of the landscaping behind the walls.
Yeah, we're referring to that behind the walls.
I mean, there may be some trees in there that can be selectively, you know, removed and replaced.
We'll work with Mr. Glenn, Lee Thurston.
Yeah, Lee has a good idea what would work. And I think what's happening here is they've kind of clustered all of the trees in the middle, so you have sight lines in from both directions because people aren't looking at the building head-on. And I think so they've cleared, I think, way too much towards the corner. And I think we can look at those and maybe keep a couple existing trees there. I think there's probably a happy medium of what can be taken down and replaced. But I think we need to look, it has to be a, we have to go out on the site and, and basically tag them, I think, and figure it out.
And I, I will, just in response to your one comment about the parking, I thoroughly, I don't disagree that you'll see ride shares and stuff like that. If we end up with this dental tenant that we anticipate, they are, they're kind of the more modern retail dentistry operation, and they're open to 9 o'clock at night. And so it's, you know, if we have a restaurant or whatever, it's not your typical dentist in downtown.
Break a tooth and go get it fixed, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, they're not open, you know, 8:30 to 4 o'clock, and you're out of luck if it's a 5 o'clock on. So, so that's why our parking concerns and, and dental patients stay a long time, unfortunately for them. And so, you know, anyway, so that's why on the parking. Certainly if we ended up with a hybrid motion of what Mr. Goulet offered, if we could keep the parking spaces and work with them on the trees based on his recommendation, we would be, we'd be agreeable with that, so.
Thanks. And also because, you know, Home Depot's behind there, and you do have a lot of spaces unutilized there. I've, I've been at that restaurant before when it's been falling. I know I've had to walk from the other area over to the restaurant.
And our only concern, first off, Home Depot is absolutely uncooperative as it relates to any easement or any cooperation for anyone parking on their property. They're openly hostile about it. Secondly, that's a very active driveway. And, and we would not want to plant on employers or anyone parking over there because of the risk of, of the speed of people flying through. They're trying to get to Imagine or the Guitar Center or wherever they're heading or whatever. But we've tried. And Home Depot, quite frankly, was the reason we did not end up with a Primanti Brothers restaurant next door to the site because they wouldn't have worked out a single thing on parking. They're openly hostile. They will not allow one car to be in their parking lot as.
They're not going to tow you, but they're not going to say you can park there.
Right, yeah. You may find a 2x4 in your windshield. I don't know.
No. But that's something also the township probably, should probably work on also, making sure.
I, I know the township is eagerly awaiting Home Depot to come and have a conversation about anything.
Well, Home Depot, basically, this is an outlot Home Depot created.
Right.
So they sold it off a long time ago, and their real estate division is kind of quirky to work with.
You're generous in your description.
Have you contacted the DDA in terms of the signage requirements? That sign looks like it's, would be non-conforming.
It meets requirements, Greg.
In terms of the multi-tenant sign?
Forty, forty, for a smaller building, 42 square feet, eight feet in height. It has to have a darker background is the only difference.
Yeah, we, we will comply with all those relevant requirements.
I've been working with a sign company, so.
Okay, because I thought it had a different configuration, design-wise.
Well, it's not a larger multi-tenant sign. This is a smaller one, 42 square feet, eight feet in height, darker background, lighter color, letter. So they just need to reverse the lettering color on it.
I'm talking about this one?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I would agree with your assessment in terms of the versatility of the multi-use. And of course, you know, Canton can, can always use another dental office.
Was that Snark?
Wow.
The, the, the prospect, though, of that becoming another restaurant is not alarm, not an alerting type of thing because since two restaurants have not continued, I don't want to use the term failure, but.
No, oh, no, and that's okay. Certainly, you know, it, it's either 1/3, 2/3, or 3/3 of the building could be a restaurant.
Could be a restaurant.
And you, you know, and, and there are various brands, national brands and others, still looking to locate around here. And so the question is the appropriateness of the site. We've gone through the special land use process for the drive-through window, which is an important thing. Fast casual is the phrase you'll hear now for the most common food preferences, and this site can do sit-down and fast cash, so.
I think the design is pretty good. I, you know.
I, I want to thank Mr. Goulet. He put Mr. Win through the, through the paces on this, on this design and worked with him on great detail, so.
Yeah, it was email over the weekend, right?
And I also welcome, if that, if that comes to pass with the outdoor patio thing, I always welcome that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Plan, I mean, so.
Anything else from the commission?
No, I, I support the discussion of keeping the trees as much as possible and, and then, and then keeping the, the parking with the caveat that hopefully the building owner will consider changing the parking lot, you know, maybe in the future if, if we do see that we don't need so much parking, you know, maybe they'll consider putting in a sidewalk instead.
And they may find a, the particular tenant on the west end, depending on who it ends to be, says, hey, you know what, we're not interested in that and blah, 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 and we'll be back based on the tenant request. And that's a whole, assuming they sign long enough lease, then we're glad to do that, you know, and work that with them, so, yeah.
I think that the building design looks very nice, and thank you for doing a good job on that. These are the materials you're, you're proposing?
Bo, do you want to, those are the material boards and.
We had to morph Aspen Dental a little bit to change some of their aspects to kind of, so it worked on the rest of the building. But I think Bo did a great job.
So it's a decision on which ones to use, or you're using all of those, then?
So all of the parts are involved.
Hey, Bo.
Okay.
So, actually, yeah, Jeff's a lot to blame for this great design. He, no, really did a great job. It was great working along with Jeff as, and many years prior to, worked together on, on projects. When I, when we first came to the board, it was more of a hybrid. There was the Aspen Dental. They have their branding ID. They have their blue cornice and a lot more blue elemental things happening. And there were some other prospects that wanted to come in, so it was more of a hybrid. And Jeff was rudimentary, great in just saying, no, we want it more cohesive and, and, you know, better vertical elements. And a lot of that geometry was fantastic job. So that's that product that you get. But, so there's, on the, on the bottom all along is the stone product. You will see to the bottom of your right. That's the aircraft product. So that will take the horizontal element all the way around the belt line on the bottom. And then we split up a couple different brick colors because Aspen wants to have a couple variations. If you want to flip on the one, around the west side.
Down.
Down, yeah.
And then the west side.
On your west, yeah.
Fourth draft.
I mean, so basically the, the pier color, there you go.
Yeah, there you go.
So they wanted the piers to be different. They actually wanted it all ephesus. So you probably have the only Aspen Dental with all brick, as much, as much brick as they have. So we did some variation in the colors with the darker and the lighter tones of brick to resolve that. And, and some very minor ephesus. They like to have their reveals, that's their Aspen Colorado mountain look, right, with the reveals. And that's kind of their brand ID. So we're able to do that above, on, on both sides, on, on the cornerstone of that building.
We're obviously hopeful we nail this down with them and we finish up with them. And, and I do want to, I'd feel remiss if I didn't note that the former chairman of the commission, Vic the Brick Gusterson, would be proud of this plan, I think.
Yes, yes. Raising the bar.
His legend, yeah, yeah.
Well, I just said if you're gonna do a, you know, a pylastor, make the pylastor of all the same material rather than dividing it up vertically.
And Jeff is right. I, I think he came along where we had a uniformity in the mass of the project, but we allowed some individuality as it relates to the units and that. So it worked out a great balance, yeah.
And we won't see any roof. And we won't see any rooftop units from the street level, right?
Only if you're flying over, yeah.
This is a very tall building, and it was one of Beau's challenges because it is, they're using the existing framing of the building, they're not shortening the building, and it's like a 25-foot-tall floor, you know, footprint, I think.
There's actually a recessed pit toward the southwest toward where they were able to take a lot of those units and put those units back in that pit area. So, yeah, you'll see.
There's a, if there's a building in Canton where the, all four views are very important, this is one of them.
No question.
Can I ask, did you do a market study to determine what, who would be in there at all, or?
Yeah, we have, I mean, and the tenants have, they're absolutely very active and aggressive about making sure their market studies are telling them this is where they want to be. And so we do market studies trying to draw tenants, but they do their own. They don't obviously take our word for that, but they do their own to make it work, and so anyone we end up with is based on their own market studies, yes, so. And Aspen has been very much wanting to get into the Canton community. They, you know, they do a lot of advertising through the region and around Michigan and the country, and so they view this as a market. They're very interested in having this presence, and even though most people in Canton think this is Westland, but, you know, we'll still work on that, so, yeah, so.
But how do we do this then in terms of, with the tree decision still?
In the motion.
Okay.
Well, I think in your motion, if you're going to allow them to keep the 10 spaces, then that's not a change you'd make to the motion. The only, the only change you would make to the motion would be to, you know, work with staff on minimizing the amount of mature tree removal and replacement.
But the 10 spaces are additional spaces.
No, no, they're on the plan right now.
You would grant the modification to parking, to allow more parking than what's required, and then you would then take the recommendation on minimizing the amount of mature tree removal and just work with staff on that, and we'll get Lee working with the landscape architect on that.
However, if we don't move trees, then we can't have any additional spaces, correct?
No, no, the trees and the spaces are not connected at all. The trees are separate issue.
There's two different issues.
They're out by the curb in the corner.
Because the use changed on it, their parking requirements were reduced, so they want to keep as many parking spaces as they can. We were recommending reducing the parking by 10 more spaces. So all you're going to do is accept the parking as shown on the plan and then, you know, modifying the landscape plan to reduce the amount of mature tree, to reduce the amount of tree removal as much as possible, so, and that'll be good enough, so.
They sell moving, I think we're good.
So moved.
Can I ask one more question? So if we don't remove any trees, what does that impact other than trimming them up more?
Well, they might have to enhance existing landscaping that's there because based on the numbers, they have to meet the numbers, so I'm not sure exactly what that would mean. Essentially, it would be, essentially they're taking out a tree and putting a tree back, so it's the same number of trees, just what size the tree is, so.
Right, that's smaller. I'd rather it trimmed up than remove them.
Right. So I think the goal is to try to minimize the removal to the greatest group possible to allow for whatever, you know, fields of vision that they need, so.
Jeff, will they be allowed to have signage on the rear of the building?
They can have because there is a cross-access agreement across the entire back. Each tenant can have a 10-square-foot sign on the back.
Back, okay.
Okay.
I'm big on that. I think that when you come out of other stores, you need to be able to see.
Yeah, it's limited to 10 square feet, but at least get some identity there, yeah, so.
Good.
I'm not worried about visibility as much because technology can be used to find buildings. I mean, and it'll improve as we go also.
No, I'm just saying that when people, you know, we, our malls are kind of like courtyards in a lot of ways, and so when you come out of one store, you should be able to look as you're going to even to your car, oh, that's such and such a place at the other. And some of the stores, because of when they came into the township, don't have signage at the back, and so I think they probably lose out a little bit of their visibility as a result.
Internal way, it's an internal wayfinding mechanism.
And it also helps to create that great appearance on all four sides of the building to try to create a uniform and finished look as opposed to just the back of some building, so, yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Did we speak this on this horse?
I'd like to make a motion.
You would?
I would.
Okay.
I move to recommend approval of the request for site plan approval for the Canton Retail Management III site plan, formerly Don Pablo's and Hayden's Restaurant, on parcel number Subject to keeping the existing parking as is, correct?
Don't even need to put that in there.
Okay, okay, then strike that. Subject to keeping as many of the existing trees as feasible and working with the township landscape architect and planning department on addressing the trees.
Support. Who supported that? Oh, okay. We've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, seeing none. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Okon?
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Atcharya?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham Hudak?
Yes.
Commissioner Engel?
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Who should I deliver these to?
Him on the podium. Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
I got dibs on hiring Jeff if he decides to work for an architecture firm, though.
What?
I said I have dibs on hiring Jeff if you decide to work for an architecture firm.
All right, thank you, folks. All right, we've got some staff referrals to do, new business, Man's Lumber, Canton Center Crossings, Imagine Theater. Do I hear a motion to refer those to staff?